Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Abby Patterson. I'm a member of the Solid Solutions organization that has submitted the rezoning application that you'll be considering as part of the Harrelson County Commission, Planning Commission. We appreciate the opportunity to be here this morning and to look over our application. First off, I want to do a little bit introductions of our team, a little bit about their backgrounds. My name is Abby Patterson. I've been in the solid waste and recycling industry for over 25 years. I have created curbside recycling programs for municipalities. I have worked on permitting of several MSW landfills, and I've worked on the zero-waste plans for three Olympic Games. I have a degree in economics from Emory University, and I feel proud to be a part of the Solid Solutions team. A little bit about Ernest Kaufman. He's the Vice President of Solid Solutions. He brings over 30 years of experience in the industry, and what makes him unique is that he has served as a City Councilman in Huntsville, Alabama, for three terms, so he understands decision-making as an elected official. Next, we have T., Mr. T. Stripling. He's the President of Solid Solution. He has decades of experience in the natural resources and environmental services industry. Michael Stubbs is our Lead Engineer. He's with HH&amp;T out of Macon, Georgia. He has a degree in civil engineering from Georgia Tech and has worked on landfills in 26 states across the country. Mr. Mark Cretti is our expert in hydrology and geology. Unfortunately, due to some inclement weather, he's unable to be here today, but Mr. Stubbs will be handling his part of the presentation. Mr. Hugh Bass is an expert residential and commercial real estate appraiser who has been performing appraisals in West Georgia for more than 30 years. Mr. Robert Norman and Mr. Joe Fowler are the attorneys who have assisted in the preparation of this rezoning application. These individuals will present aspects of the request that is before you, both the landfill and the industrial park. Okay, next slide. Next slide, please. This is an aerial view of the...I'm sorry, I'm gonna take this out of here if I can figure it out wrong. This is an aerial view of the property. We have a total of 2,047 acres, and that site includes buffers, an industrial park, a solid waste facility, and other uses. So just to orient you, this is Interstate I-20 down here to the south, and then to the west, we have State Route 100. Just to kind of give you an idea, this is the entrance to the facility, which is within 500 yards of Interstate 20. It's important to note that the area surrounding us is predominantly non-residential. I wanted to point out some of the uses that are next to us. Here, we have the closed MSW landfill of the county. This is an online facility. We have the county's current operational C&amp;D. That's called Construction Demolition Landfill. A little bit to the north, we have the transfer station. This is where most of the waste from Harrelson County goes to put on a floor and gets hauled out of the county to Polk County. We have Waco wastewater treatment plant. On the northern section, we have the Norfolk Southern Railroad line. Up here, we have the Tally Mountain Golf Course, and across from that, the City of Tallapousa Industrial Park. Here, we have some chicken houses, an operational gold mine, and the Honda Performance Parts. So as you can see, this is pretty industrial land. The site appears to be well-suited for a proposed landfill. It meets the applicable EPD requirements for site selection. The site location is consistent with the goals and policies of the Harrelson County Joint Comprehensive Plan and the future development map. It is also consistent with the Economic Development Enterprise Zone of the City of Tallapousa on Georgia 100. Next slide, please. This is a conceptual site plan and a buffer plan. Again, I want to kind of orient where we are. This is Highway 20 to the south, and then this is Interstate 20. This is Highway 100 right here. As you can see, the entrance to the facility is here, very close to the interstate, and you enter the facility and then go through the entrance to the industrial park, which is right here. And this road is 1.5 miles till you get to the actual solid waste facility where waste would be deposited. The first part of the depositing of waste would be in the southern cell, and Michael's going to talk a little bit more about the construction of the landfill and safety features associated with it. We also plan to have a recovered material and recycling facility here. Again, you can see in the other areas outside of these two lobes that make up the solid waste facility are these purple areas. These are what's called soil borrow pits. The waste is covered every day with soil, so we have areas that we can draw from to find that soil. These will not be opened simultaneously just as needed, and once they're used, they are Up here to the north is some could be used for industrial or recreational use. We have to work with the community to see what they might want to see this green area turn into. Also, we have an area kind of marked off as possible of walking trail, about 200 feet wide, and it would connect up to here. This little area is another parcel that could be used for commercial uses in the future. Next slide, please. This next slide is just a closer view of the industrial park. Again, Interstate 20, Highway 100. This has approximately 150 acres that could be used for development, and it has over 1 million square feet of industrial warehouse space. You can see here that strategically, we've created these buffers so that nothing will be built here. It's conservation area, and it also works with some of the elevations to kind of block any view of this. Next, I want to talk a little bit about why we're here today. We're here to inform you, the Planning Commission of Harrelson County, that our rezoning application is compliant with the 12 rezoning criteria set by the county. Solid Solutions goes above and beyond local, state, and federal requirements in all of its infrastructure projects. Not only will you hear how our company meets the zoning criteria, but hopefully you will also learn that our design, construction, and community involvement go above and beyond. We do this so we can create successful projects and partnerships. Okay, so for your reference, these are the 12 points of the zoning criteria that are set forth by your county code. We meet these criteria, and this has been supported by the evaluations, reports, and studies that have been supported by 14 separate experts in their fields. The facts relevant to these criteria, which govern your decision, will be addressed throughout our presentation and further addressed by our attorney, Bob Norman, at the conclusion. It's also important to note that Solid Solutions has already completed the Development of Regional Impact, or DRI, process, and there were no adverse comments or concerns. Next slide. Next slide is just the table of contents of our zoning application. Our application are these two thick binders. We've made it available to the public on our website. We did this out of transparency, so that anyone who wanted to come and read any of these reports or assessments, they could read it and make comment. Our application was prepared and designed to meet and exceed the requirements of the Harrelson County zoning ordinance. As you can see, letters H through U...oh, I'm sorry. Can you go a slide before the index? Okay, yes, slides. If you could look at letters H through U, these are all studies and assessments and evaluations that we sourced. We did not have to do this, but we did it so we could have the best project available. And these, some of the studies include traffic impact, value impact on nearby property, noise, odor, sightlines, et cetera, but all of those are included in your binders. Next slide. Zoning officials look to determine what impacts a proposed use will have on a county and on its citizens. Knowing that, Solid Solutions has voluntarily proposed zoning conditions, and they are listed here. These are the requirements we've put upon our application on our own. I'm going to go over them briefly. No waste will be accepted outside the state of Georgia. The solid waste facility will not exceed 300 acres, and T. will comment on this in his presentation. The facility will only accept municipal solid waste. Specifically, it will not accept coal ash, municipal sewage sludge, industrial wastewater treatment sludge, and medical waste. We will have financial assurance for closure and post-closure of the facility, and Michael's going to go a little bit into that in his presentation, and no waste will be accepted by rail. The land will not be used for 24 prohibited uses that are in your binder as well. Our presentation that follows will be structured to address each of these 12 zoning issues. When this hearing is done today, we ask that you provide a recommendation for approval to the Board of Commissioners. Now, I'm going to introduce T. Stripling, and he will talk a little bit about the site selection process.
I want to thank the Planning Commission for this opportunity. Solid Solutions understands that this is an important part of the zoning process, and so we really appreciate this opportunity to present the project to y'all today. We're really, really proud of what we've got here. We're proud of this zoning application. And what I want to go through is I want to use this 3D scale model that I have in front of the Planning Commission. And what this is, is a scale model that was actually printed with a 3D printer. So everything's to scale. You can see Tally Mountain on there, all the elevations. Everything is exactly to scale. It is a full replica, a real-life replication of what the project will look like when it's finished. And we actually can take the landfill through some different phases, and I'll walk through that. But the reason why I'm doing this here is so I can explain to the Planning Commission why we chose this site. Why do we choose Harrelson County? Why are we here today? And part of this is I want to use the scale model to illustrate to the Planning Commission that this site actually selected itself. And how it selected itself is Solid Solutions sets forth to have its own siting criteria. Our siting criteria meets or exceeds a siting criteria set forth by the state and set forth by the local ordinance of Harrelson County. And so number one, in our siting criteria, we make sure that whatever development opportunity that we enter into, first and foremost, protects the environmental and health and safety of the community. And so how we do that is we first look within a county, and we try to identify major undeveloped tracts of land. They have to be at least 1,000 acres in size, and they need to be a minimum of 2 to 3 miles from a major transportation corridor. So Ernest and I and several other members of our team took the better part of a full year researching major sites throughout all of North Georgia. Any county that was really, frankly, within a 100-mile radius of downtown Atlanta, we looked at. We predominantly looked at counties within a 50-, 60-mile radius. And just trying to find a site that is a minimum of 1,000 acres and is at least 2 or 3 miles from a major transportation corridor, frankly, most importantly, an interstate, but if it is a major four-lane highway, we would consider that as well, almost eliminated...it eliminated a lot of counties that we looked at. And then as we further drove in, we wanted to look at consistency of zoning, remoteness, make sure that we weren't in an area that had a lot of residential development because we wanted to have it be an industrial project. We looked at the geology, the land, things like that, and that all drove...it eliminated every single site that we looked at with the exception of this site here in Harrelson County. And frankly, the only reason why we came back and were able to identify this site in Harrelson County is because we engaged into an assemblage to develop it. And so what you see in front of you is actually, it's probably a 5,000 to 6,000-acre replication, and our project is all over 2,000 acres in the center of it. And that 2,000 acres was an assemblage that we completed with over 10 different property owners and over 25 separate parcels. So it took us a tremendous amount of time to do this. We did it all because we realized that this was going to make for the absolute best project that we could possibly present to Harrelson County. And so that was our intent all along. And so what I want to do is I want to walk the Planning Commission, and frankly, what I'd love to do is invite y'all maybe up so you can see the scale model just for a brief moment. I can walk you through the major landscapes, and I think it'll give you a little bit better perspective than just kind of sitting down. Would it be okay with you, Mr. Chairman, if y'all came up and looked at it just for a second?
Sure.
Great, thank you. So Abby sort of walked through this, but I'm going to go through the major features, okay? So here's the old county closed landfill right here, okay? There's the transfer station. There's the shooting range. This is the power line easement that comes through. This is the major gas line easement that comes through. This is the Norfolk Southern dual-track main line that runs through, okay? There's Tally Mountain. And then the Tally Mountain Ridge, as it runs down, is just remarkable in terms of the ridge line that it presents. It stretches over 200 feet over the low areas, like right here, as well as down here, right by the Gold Creek subdivision into our industrial park. So as you can see, it's a really heavily industrial area. The Honda Precision Parts over here, the active gold mines over there, Interstate 20 is right here. This is a conceptual layout of what the industrial park would potentially look like with approximately a million square feet worth of industrial-use warehouse space. But the only area, as you can see, that has got any heavy concentration of residential is right here, the Gold Creek subdivision. And I want to discuss that maybe in greater depth a little bit more. But what I'd love for y'all to do is sort of get down and look, and you can see the elevations. It really gives you a great perspective. And then y'all can go ahead and sit back down again, and I'll try to walk through. I appreciate you coming up and looking at it. Yeah. On the plugs? Yeah, I can, absolutely, yeah. Okay, great, yeah. So we have plugs. I'll just go ahead and put in the finished plug so you can see the elevations of that. Yeah, so the site's approximately 2,000 acres, and because we own the timber rights, what's really important to us, too, is that we own the timber rights on all the property that we acquire for development. I appreciate y'all coming up and looking at the scale model. And the reason why we do that is because we want to make sure that we have significant buffers for the surrounding community. And the reason why that's important is because we want to make sure that when we do our impact studies, be it a traffic or a noise, that we can show, we can prove scientifically to the community that there are no impacts from a noise or a traffic standpoint. And so because we have the amount of property that we've acquired, because we've got the buffers in place, we can prove scientifically within our zoning package that no property, no residential property is impacted from a noise standpoint because of this development. Number two, when you look at our access road, which is 500 yards from Exit 5 on Highway 100, you can see we don't pass any residential subdivisions. We don't pass any churches. We don't pass any schools. We don't pass any hospitals. And so we come right off the interstate, right into the development. We come off a federally funded interstate system on a state highway, ride onto our own private mile-and-a-half road with acceleration and deceleration lanes to make sure that no traffic will ever back up on Highway 100. And the results of the traffic study that's in the zoning application show that there will be no adverse impacts from any truck, from any truck activities. So once we got past looking at those two, we saw the scattering residential...well, I want to point out one thing about the access road, actually, and as it relates to Gold Creek subdivision. This ridge line right here that we've left, we've intentionally left as buffer, it stretches 200 feet in the air. So what will happen when trucks enter this site and go back behind this ridge, no one in Gold Creek subdivision will see or hear the trucks. And this was so important to us. I mean, we had the ability to build our access road here, up here on Highway 78, up here on Gold Creek subdivision. We kind of had almost over a dozen different access points, but we spent a tremendous amount of time and energy because we didn't initially have the ability to build the access road here. But we finally were able to, you know, work an agreement out with this property owner. We were able to put the access road here, and that was so important to Solid Solutions that we were going to be able to offer that to the community because we understood that having a truck route that had trucks going past schools and residential subdivisions was going to be, you know, would have an impact to the community. So we wanted to make sure we have that. So we looked at the scattering residential homes that are in this and how remote it is, and really the consistency of zoning, the fact that we had, you know, the rail line up here with probably over 200,000 tons worth of freight a day that crosses on it, Interstate 20 with all the freight that passes on it every day, and all the other industrial uses like the closed county landfill and the fact that the active transfer station is there right now. And we really love the consistency of zoning. This site really started jumping out at us. We used the studies, the 14 studies that we undertook, from threatening and danger to cultural, to hydrogeological, to wetlands, floodplain. We studied, obviously, noise, traffic, odor. We studied any kind of potential impacts to property values. Mr. Stubbs will go through these more in depth, but we used that to drive the location of the landfill. And what happened was the studies showed us that the landfill needed to go right there, right in the center. And so when we started looking at it, we said, well, there's no way we can develop this landfill over 300 acres. So we immediately made the assurance to the community that it would never exceed 300 acres. And the reason for this is because you've got this major gas line that runs right here, and you would never, ever, ever build and move this gas line because it's one of the biggest gas easements in the whole US East Coast. It's physically impossible to move that. You've got the county closed landfill to the east. You've got Interstate...we've got Walker Creek here to the south, and so that boxes in the facility, so it'll never exceed 300 acres as a condition of zoning, as a condition of any approved host agreement, and then also just from a practical standpoint. So we've established this, and when we started looking at the landfill, Ernest and I and the rest of our team were really, really impressed by the fact that it sat down in a bowl and that Tally Mountain Ridge ran like it did and the elevations that it provided, and just the fact that you would not be able to see the landfill. And it was really just so remarkable that this development, that this piece of property was here, and just the fact that it's so difficult to access it. There's some streams that you have to cross over. The elevation change is so dramatic. It started to make sense why this large tract of land was available so close to the interstate because it's so difficult to develop and it's so perfectly suited for what we're trying to do, that we went ahead and did a line of site study. We got an engineering firm to come out and do a line of site study. And how that worked is we actually flew a drone at the highest elevation of the landfill, and we flew it around for half a day, and we took pictures of any possible vantage point that we might be able to see from there. And then after that, we came in because we weren't...we liked the results of that line of site study, but we thought we could do something even better. So we came in...all this is voluntary. This isn't required by any Georgia law or any party of your local ordinance, but we wanted to do it because we wanted to explain to the community about the visibility of the landfill. We came in and we flew some weather balloons at various heights. Having known the areas where it would potentially be visible, we then went around and we looked for over, for close to a full day reviewing all the sites. And what the line of site study showed is that the landfill, at any point in its life, will not be visible from any parts of the city of Tallapousa, the city of Waco, Highway 100 north of Interstate 20, all the way into Tallapousa, Highway 78, Interstate 20 headed eastbound at any point. And there will be a few line of sites if you're headed on Interstate 20 headed westbound, when you cross over the overpass, if you look to your left, momentarily, there'll be a line of sight just until you get over the overpass. And then as you head south on 100, the elevation actually goes up, and there are some isolated line of sites there, but those line of sites are mostly limited to the latter half of the landfill. Well, they're all limited to the latter half of the landfill, and they're isolated in nature, and what people will see at that point in time is they're going to see a grassy hill from a distance. They won't see waste. Only the workers at the landfill will actually be able to see the waste. So we were excited about our ability to offer that, and I've got these plugs. And what I want to do quickly is walk through the various stages of the landfill and explain to y'all how the landfill development works. So it's not going to exceed 300 acres, but we don't just come in day one and clear-cut 300 acres. We develop a landfill in 10-acre cells, and each 10-acre cell, we do not develop until it's time to develop it. So we don't clear the land until we're ready to start developing the cell. So this is about year 10, okay? So you see that only about a third of the western lobe's been developed. The rest of the trees are left in place. And as we close a section, as we're finished with a section, we close it. So this landfill will have a close-as-you-go construction method, and it's closed the same way it's constructed at the bottom, and it's grassed. So it starts to resemble a grassy hill, which is going to really resemble the undulating terrain of the area. So this is year 10. Approximately year 20, you can see the western lobe's finished, and then back to the finished, closed-out landfill, which we estimate to be about 30 years from now. So there are very few residential homes within a 1-mile radius of the footprint, which, as I've already stated, was one of the best characteristics of and one of the best drivers of why we decided to develop this site. And we believe in the results of Hugh Bass's study that's in our zoning application that shows that there will be no adverse property impacts for the development of this landfill. But just to alleviate any concerns that members of the community might have, we've gone ahead and installed a property value protection program for members, for any residential property that is within a 1-mile radius of the landfill. And what that property value protection program offers is, for a period of time of 10 years after the landfill opens, if any residential property goes to sell their home and they cannot get the value, as if it was from an appraiser, as if it was appraised, as if it was not sitting next to a landfill, if they cannot get that value for their home, then we'll pay the difference for a period of 10 years. So even though we believe and we do not see any impacts, as proven in our zoning application, we still have that that we can offer the community. So lastly, we look at the geology of the site. We've drilled. Mr. Stubbs is going to deal with this. He's our professional engineer. Initially, we had Mark Cretti, who's our geologist, hydrogeologist. He's got experience in siding over 37 landfills in his career. He's actually our geologist, but he got stuck in weather in Greenville, South Carolina, so he couldn't make it, unfortunately. But we've drilled, I think, 13 wells here. We've done a number of pits, so we've extensively studied the geology of the site. And we know that the geology is suitable for developing a landfill. We've gone ahead and reviewed all the other EPD site requirements, and we can make the statement that the preliminary analysis shows that the landfill meets all EPD siting requirements. So I think what I want to do at this time is hand it over to Mr. Stubbs, who's our professional engineer, and I'd like for him to talk about construction, design and operation, liners, and some more about site suitability.
My name is Michael Stubbs. I'm a registered professional engineer in approximately 11 states. I've been practicing in the solid waste industry for about 25 years. I'm employed by Hodges, Harbin, and Nibery in Tribble. We have solid waste clients all over the country. I think I've been in about 26 states and worked on landfills, also in the Bahamas and Puerto Rico. I've got two pieces today I want to talk to you about. The first is the hydro and geology portion of the site. Mr. Mark Cretti, a professional geologist, is going to present that, but the weather kept him from doing so. So I'll give you a brief intro of Mark. Mark has a bachelor's and a master's in geology. He's been a licensed geologist for about, since 1991. He's licensed in approximately seven states and works on over 37 landfills in the southeast in the permitting capacity, lots of them in the state of Georgia. The first thing that the group asked Mark to do was to take a look at the siting criteria for the landfill. And landfills in the United States of America are heavily regulated. You have multiple governments that oversee it. You have many state and federal regulations that are continuous from siting to design to construction to operation and ultimately closure and post-closure for a 30-year minimum period after the landfill closes. So all of those are incorporated into the initial siting decision. Next, there we go, perfect. So I can't tell you how many pieces of property we must have looked at over the course of roughly a year to find one that started to meet the criteria. These criteria developed from the Code of Federal Regulations, the Georgia Geological Survey, the EPD Solid These criteria are developed from the Code of Federal Regulations, the Georgia Geological Survey, the EPD Solid Waste Management Rules, the Official Code of Georgia, Safe Drinking Water Rules, and of course, Mark and HHNT's experience in the industry. So, some of these criteria are listed out here. Several of these criteria are outright prohibitions. If you have them, you cannot site a landfill there. Just a few of those are buffers to airports, national historic sites, bombing ranges, number of facilities in a given area. So several of these on this list here are just outright prohibitions. If you have them, give up, move on. Others on this are restrictions that require design to either mitigate or avoid altogether. A few of those might be floodplains or a trout stream or a wetland or something like that. So, Billy's first task was to go through all of that. They did, and their finding was, after a thorough investigation, Billy informed the vindicator team that they did not identify a single state or federal regulation that would stop the project. So we crossed that bridge. The next task that we asked Billy to do is just because it meets a siting restriction doesn't mean that it's going to meet the hydro-geology and the geologic need for a landfill. So we have them go out and investigate that. So they do. The only way to really investigate a site like that is to get out there with a drill rig and test tow pits and get out there and explore what's underneath the ground. They did so. Next slide, please. As you can see, one more corner here. The geologists developed the exact locations for the borings based on where we believe the footprint might go. Obviously, those are determined by an expert in the field. They did so. They drilled approximately 14 borings from anywhere to bedrock to groundwater, some even up to 70 feet in depth. They took samples of the soil and the rock beneath the ground and tested those in accordance with engineering parameters. They came back with the results, and I'll summarize those here in just a second. They also dug many, many test pits around the facility. That's shown by these black dots here. And so, those test pits, I was, we dug more than that, but we dug those where we thought barsoils and operational soils and liner landfill soils were present. They discovered those soils there, which was not necessarily a surprise, but it was, it further supported the need and the, the location of this facility. So, once they did all of that, they installed approximately 11 pizometers in those 14 holes, and we measured the groundwater for over a year, watching the groundwater rise and fall so that any landfill design would be above what we call seasonal high. We also had a professional technician take a look at the soils that's experienced in landfill construction so that the soils coming out with the samples to determine whether or not they would meet the necessary soils for both operation and liner construction soils. So after all this was done, Billy issued some conclusions. They are: The groundwater table mimics the ground surface, as we expected. Soils encountered were generally stiff clay and sandy silt, suitable for landfill operation and construction. The bedrock encounter was very hard and not subject to developing karst features, so it's strong. Bedrock and stiff soils will provide for a stable landfill foundation, not subject to large amounts of sediment, which is supportive of a landfill. Laboratory tests of shallow soils demonstrate that they are capable of both landfill soil liner materials and operational soils for the site, and that the landfill subgrade will be based on groundwater separation and bedrock separation. Their final conclusion that they gave to the team was that site's location restrictions, results coupled with the site's geological, hydro-geological, and geotechnical characteristics show that the landfill, that the site is suitable for MSW development.